Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board Meeting of December 6, 2022. As the record show, the meeting started promptly at 5:30 PM. I will read what I'm supposed to read. Pursuit to Governor Baker's July 16, 2022 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2023. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491P, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as is practical and possible. Okay, our first item of business is to roll call. Mr. Castro?
President Davis?
Present.
Mr. Shell?
Present.
Mr. Metters?
Present.
And the Chair, Mr. Dykens, is present as well. Minutes are next on the minutes of November 22, 2022. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
And comments, suggestions, edits, Mr. Shell.
I have one moderately substantive suggestion on page five. This was my comment that's reflected here. I thought it would be a little bit more reflective of what I was saying if in the second paragraph, second line, we added some words so that it reads, suggested for future releases, that may make it less onerous and more palatable to property owners.
Okay, Shawna, you got that? Thank you, Mr. Shell. Mr. Castro, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, with that edit, we'll take a vote. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Now, it's the time in the agenda when we entertain public announcements and/or agenda item requests from either the Board or folks here in person and/or online. So any public announcements or agenda item requests from the Select Board this evening? I see none. Any from the folks here in person? I see none as well. And then any online agenda item requests and/or public announcements? I see none there as well. Okay, moving on. We have a public hearing. The next item on our agenda to consider disbanding the North Beach Advisory Committee, and I will prevail upon Mr. Shell, our clerk, to read the public announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing in accordance with Section 5-2 of the Home Rule Charter on Tuesday, December 6, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room at the Town Hall Annex 261 George Ryder Road to consider disbanding the North Beach Advisory Committee. Remote participation will be available through a link in the posted agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Signed, the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Just a little background, and Shawna, you can help me out here as well, and anybody on the Select Board. But when we review our assignment once a year, we review our committees, their makeup, their reason to continue. We discuss the notion of disbanding the North Beach Advisory Committee. We have not, it has not been in existence for quite some time for issues related to the North Beach. I think Ms. Davis and I have been acting as kind of a formal, yeah, a formal subcommittee of the Board in terms of dealing with Orleans, et cetera, and issues on the beach, and working with Dr. Duncanson and staff to do so. So I'll entertain any other comments. I know Ms. Davis said.
Yeah, we had, thanks, Jeff. We, over the course of the last several years, we've reached out to a lot of the users on the beach to see if they were interested in, in being part of this committee, and we haven't had any takers. So it, I think it would be best served for now, but I wouldn't want to see this be, you know, I think we should keep it open for reconsideration going forward when we review Boards, but I think it would be best served that we do disband this committee and that, you know, that two members of the Board of Selectmen be part of an informal group, as it has been, to be able to work with Dr. Duncanson and the rest of the staff, as well as a ton of Orleans in, in mitigating any or negotiating any of the lease agreements.
And we have a meeting this Friday with the phone call?
Yes, we do.
Okay, any other suggestions or comments from, yes, Mr. Metters?
Actually, no, more of a clarification. So I go on coming into this, I thought, you know, unfortunately, we've had very few volunteers stepping forward. We've had a couple people check it off, but they've also applied to other committees at the same time. So we haven't had that much interest, unfortunately, for the committee. But your comment about, you know, kind of keeping it open for the future is, give me a little bit of pause, because I think once we disband it and shut it down, it's going to get tucked aside, and I don't think anyone's going to really want to look at it. So with that being said, do we want to disband it, or do you just want to do status quo and let it sit, knowing that staff is doing what we want to? I'm just trying to get some clarification, because you guys are doing a lot of work on behalf of the Board and the town, and my concern is if you think it has some merit down the road, because once it's gone, it's probably got to get gone.
So, yes, that might be true. I always look at the Montemoy Working Group and, and what we did with that group. We didn't, never had a formal committee on the Montemoy Island issues. We did take and look at, we had advisory committees that would weigh in on some of the things like this, the waterways and the shellfish advisory committee, and I don't see any reason why they couldn't be part of, you know, that any issues that are coming up in relationship to North Beach, as far as resources are concerned, those committees could take, take a look at it. If we just don't have bodies in the room, that people aren't expressing any interest, it just seems like it's, it's a resource, you know, it exhausts resources amongst the staff.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Okay, any more comments from the Select Board on this issue? Any comments from the public? This is a public hearing. Any comments from anybody online? This is a public hearing. Okay, hearing seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board disband the North Beach Advisory Committee effective immediately.
Second. Thank you, okay. Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. We have a very important drinking water testing and pumping update from Weston and Sampson, our project manager, Tom Barr. I believe, Tom, I see you online. Give us the skinny, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
So just to follow up on past issues with Well 4, it's currently online. We are using that well as we have been all summer. We're pumping about 600 gallons per minute from there. Right now, the wells are running about four to five hours a day, so the flows are definitely down, as we would expect this time of year. So Well 4 will remain online for the next couple of months as we do some work on some of our other wells, just regular annual maintenance that we do, self-Chatham in particular. We have Well 3 offline right now to do a well cleaning, and we will be changing out some chem feed lines at Wells 1 and 2. So Well 4 will stay online while those repairs are just being made. We're hoping to take that offline after the New Year, end of January, February, to give it a rest, and then use it again come this late spring. Hopefully by Memorial Day, we'll be turning that back on. Wells 5 and 8, the temporary treatment plant, that vessel was shut down in mid-October. It remains offline. It has been winterized, and we will be turning that back on probably around Memorial Day as well. So early May to make sure we get all the kinks out, but have that back online for, for the summer season. Wells 5 and 8, permanent treatment. Weston and Sampson Engineering is preparing a December submission of the MAS DEP WS22, which is the approval of a pilot study report. So they're hoping to get that application in within the next couple of days. They're also preparing for the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act review. Then the town has approved the inclusion of rooftop solar panels on the new water treatment plant, and Weston and Sampson Engineering is preparing for a mid-December 75% design submittal for town review. Any questions on the training field sites before we move on to 10 and 11, or do you want me to just keep moving?
Any questions on training field? Any, okay. Keep going, Tom, please.
All right, Wells 10 and 11. Robert Hour is continuing to put the work in there, get those up and running, hopefully for the fall of '23. They've got the below slab process pipes and plumbing all put in. The slab has been poured, and they are working on putting up the wall. So the construction over at that site has been going along quite well. They, Weston and Sampson Engineers have submitted the Mill Pond Road 12-inch water main to the contractors for bid. We're hoping to get some proposals from a couple of contractors so that we can get that main all put in while the sewer work is being done as well. So it's not going to be too much of a disruption to the families out on Mill Hill Road, and the shop drawings are in progress, and they're hoping to have those submitted soon. Pumping comparison, for the entire month of November, we are 13% over 2021. That's approximately about 2.2 million gallons more this year than last year. So a little bit of a spike in November, but I think a lot of people, there was some warm weather at the beginning of the month, so they were kind of getting all their preparations for the winter done, stuff like that. So other than that, we're in good shape. Like I said, four to five hours for our wells. We were able to take a couple offline for some maintenance, so everything seems good at the moment.
Okay, Mr. Barr, any questions for Mr. Barr? I have one, just 10 and 11, and just refresh my memory. When do we think they might be online?
We're hoping to have that one online the fall of '23, as long as we don't have any hiccups with the construction. So Wells 10, 11, fall of '23, winter of '23.
So not, not for the summer?
No, we don't believe we'll have it for the summer. It'd be great if we do, but projection is the fall, September, October.
And then, and then for your recommendations on water restrictions, you were recommending that we just, we continue where we are?
Yeah, I mean, nobody's, nobody's irrigating right now. I would just say we continue the course. The, well, the water levels are not rising. Hopefully, we'll get a lot of precipitation this winter. We have had a couple of rain events, but not nearly enough to, to get the levels up. I'm predicting that we'll probably have to maybe start out this spring with a voluntary water ban, but we can talk about that after the winter and see what kind of precipitation we get.
Just one more. We're running how many wells now versus what we run in the summer? So?
Right now, we are running, we are running Wells 6, 7, 9, and 4. So we have four out of the eight, with Well 8 being down. So this summer, we went, ran eight wells, so we're running four out of the eight right now.
Okay, so it's a fair statement to say we're at 50%, we're running 50% of what we run during the summer?
Yep, and much lower flows, too.
At least by wells, I don't know about gallons or whatever, but, yeah. Mr. Shell?
Yeah, I just want to push you on a little bit on the, on the comparative pumpage. November this year versus, last year was a drop of, I don't know, what is it, 19, call it 19 million gallons from October to November. This year, it was 15. I'm just wondering if there, other than people doing stuff normally, is there any other factor that you've observed that would explain why there was that, that real change in terms of the, the drop month to month?
No, I mean, you're asking the drops and why it's been less in '22 instead of '21?
Yeah, it's just another way to look at the statistics, to see if there's something that leaps out that, that is a factor that we ought to be aware of, other than just more water.
Yeah, no, I think we're just, people are just using more water. Throughout the, the fall, we definitely saw a drop, September and whatnot, but I think there was this little bit of a spike here in November, because a lot of people wanted to kind of get their stuff ready. That was a big talking point throughout the summer, as we all know, about wanting to spray off our houses and our property and stuff like that to protect it. So I think that might have been a little bit of a spike in November. We did have a couple minor little leaks, but nothing major that would have caused that kind of a spike. A couple of irrigation systems let go, because folks didn't have them shut off in time, and so they froze up. But other than that, no, we're pretty much normal.
And more or less the same level in the storage tanks year to year?
Yeah, the storage, the storage tanks will stay the same. Like, the storage tanks operate off of 103 feet, and they'll drop down to 98 feet the wells turn on. So the storage tank just dictates when our wells turn on and off.
Okay.
But we're not losing capacity in our storage tanks.
So it's really, it's just usage?
It's usage, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on, anything else on water with Mr. Barr? Okay. Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Take care, yep.
Mr. Chair, I just want to note that the Water and Storage Advisory Committee is meeting on December 12, and they do have a working group to look at the restrictions for next year.
Super, okay. Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Tom. Okay, on to our business agenda now. We have public comments on our business agenda this evening. That's the next agenda item. We have a kind of a robust business agenda this evening. We have a request to use town roads by the Cape Cod Athletic Club's Chatham Harbor Run. This is, Mr. Tansey will be presenting or will be approving. This is something we've done every single year. His track record is wonderful. Consider an application for special one-day alcohol permits for Mark August and Chatham Walkers at the Community Center. Update on new electric rates from our esteemed former Select Board member, Mr. Kokolos. Annual liquor license renewals. Consider requests for temporary closings of establishments holding annual liquor licenses. Discussion on town property at 127 Old Harbor Road. We had a vibrant discussion last week, and that's going to continue tonight. We have town manager appointment extension and successor employment agreement, very important extension. And then we have committee appointments, Summer Residence Advisory Committee and the Human Services Committee. So I will entertain public comments on any one of those items in the business agenda this evening, right now. If anybody would like to speak to any, any item on that agenda, come forward and/or raise your hand if you're online, and if not, we'll continue. Okay, hearing seeing nobody. We'll go on to the first request to use town roads. Cape Cod Athletic Club's Chatham Harbor Run 10K, June 25, 2023, and Chatham in the Fall 10K, November 19, 2023. Mr. Howard Tansey, who has been here from prior years, and I think it's the same route and just about the same time, Mr. Tansey. Take it away.
Yep, everything is the same. This is our first year back, you know, with both the Harbor Run and the Chatham in the Fall 10K after COVID. So we were very pleased with our response to our registration for both races. We ended up having 218 runners finish both races. Our registration was up from that. You know, people register and don't show up, which is a typical thing to do. But we'll be, you know, in touch with the police department, the fire department, you know, everybody we need to be in touch with to make sure that race goes off as smoothly as possible, and this year was no exception. It was awesome, so we're just looking to do, get the stuff going so we can start, start the process of getting it going, so.
So just a quick comment. I would like to comment on the excess funds. Should you generate them? Go where? I think you should mention that.
The Chatham Harbor Run goes to, there's a scholarship for Montemoy, and also goes into our Cape Cod Athletic Club Scholarship Fund that we, Capewide, we do some stuff. And then the Chatham in the Fall 10K went to Sharing Kindness, which is a suicide awareness group that stays, all the money stays here on Cape Cod and the islands. So that's where all the excess money goes.
Super, thank you. Questions for Howard? Mr. Tansey? Okay, motion, please. Mr. Metters?
I move to approve the use of town roads for the 42nd Annual Chatham Harbor Run/Walk to be held on Sunday, June 25, 2023, and I also move to approve the use of town roads for the 6th Annual Chatham in the Fall 10K Race to be held on Sunday, November 19, 2023.
Okay, enough vote. Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Metters?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Howard, thank you. Have fun. Raised a lot of money.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you take care. Next item is the consideration of applications for special one-day alcohol permits. The first is Mark August, 490 Main Street, for December 9, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. It looks to me like it's in sync with the Christmas event, Christmas Stroll. Shawna?
That's correct. This is for Christmas Stroll. Application came in complete, signed. It's, I don't have any concerns.
Okay. Motion, please. Mr. Shell?
I move to approve a special one-day alcohol permit for wine and malt beverages only for Corinne Blakeney as a representative of Mark August for indoor service only at 490 Main Street on Friday, December 9, 2022, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Great, thank you. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Thank you. We have another application for a special one-day alcohol permit from the Chatham Walkers at the Community Center, December 13, 2022, from 5:00 to 8:45 PM. And Shawna?
Mary Ellen Loriffis from the Chatham Walkers is on the line.
Hi, Mary Ellen, please.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm representing Chatham Walkers, and we're, this is our annual holiday party. It's a potluck, and it's all adults, it's all senior citizens, and we, we're in about three hours, and then we do our cleanup. Everyone brings their own wine or beer and a potluck dish to share.
And you've, you've done this in years past with, with regularity? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Castro?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, to grant a special one-day liquor license to Mary Ellen Loriffis on behalf of the Chatham Walkers for Tuesday, December 13, 2021, from 5:00 PM to 8:45 PM at the Chatham Community Center, and to further grant permission to possess slash consume alcohol on town property as associated with this permit.
Super, thank you, Mr. Castro. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Okay, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. And that concludes our applications for special one-day alcohol permits.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Have fun. Now, we have Mr. Peter Kokolos, a former Select Board member, to give us an update on new electric rates from Cape Light Compact. Welcome, Peter. Nice to see you.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
We have my, I'm down to give the presentation, and I've opted to have Maggie do it, since she can do it much, much better.
That's not true.
In any case, as you know, I, we come back every six months on, on rates. This year is particularly a tough time for everyone, so. For the record, I'm Peter Kokolos, the Chatham rep to the Cape Light Compact, and joining us tonight is Maggie Downey, the Administrator for Cape Light Compact. You know, we're all impacted greatly by the rising cost of electricity, especially since we noticed in, since last summer. You know, the supply rates, starting in our July bills last summer, increased, when normally, after the winter season, they would decrease. And now, the winter Cape Light Compact supply rates, starting with our January bills, will continue to increase. Now, they're lower than a number of other supply, power suppliers, but it's still significant. So Maggie's here to discuss this real issue. She will, excuse me, she will review who Cape Light Compact is. This is for the audience, I know you have the charts. Provide the new power supply rates, offer why these rates are continuing to go up, and then recommend some mitigating, mitigation strategies. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Maggie, and I can come up later if there are any comments or questions, okay?
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see here and nice to be here in, in person. Let's see, that worked. So as Peter said, I'm just going to give some background on the Cape Light Compact for the audience. The Cape Light Compact is a joint powers entity formed by the 21 towns on, 15 towns on the Cape, six towns on the vineyard back in 1997, and we restructured in 2017 as a result of the Municipal Modernization Act that was passed by the Baker Administration that improved fiscal accountability and strengthened checks and balances in joint powers entity. We are a public entity. The Cape Light Compact is the towns. The towns are the Cape Light Compact. Where you are, we report to you. You, each, each town has a member that represents the town in all of the activities that the Cape Light Compact participates in. We are the first municipal aggregator in Massachusetts. There are 351 cities and towns, and we have almost 200 municipal aggregators now in Massachusetts, but none as longstanding as the Cape Light Compact. We are also the only municipal aggregator that runs energy efficiency programs here in Massachusetts. We are, our offices are located on White's located on White's Path in South Yarmouth. There are, we have three hats. We do three primary functions on behalf of the towns. One is to negotiate a power supply, the terms and conditions of an opt-out power supply contract for all of our two hundred and eight thousand electric ratepayers. And again, this is opt-out. Customers can leave the Cape Light Compact's power supply program at any time without any charges or fees to them. It is a hundred percent renewable, meaning we match all of the electricity with renewable energy certificates. So the electricity is grid-based, comes from the New England Power System, but we match that with renewable energy certificates to green up our electricity and promote renewable energy. We also run an energy efficiency program. That is ninety-nine percent of what we do, and ninety-nine percent of the budget is our energy efficiency program, which is available to all electric ratepayers regardless of who your supplier is. And then consumer advocacy. We participate and represent the Cape and Vineyard Town interests at Department of Public Utilities Dockets. Specifically, the most recent one we've been involved in is the latest EverSource rate case, as well as grid modernization and their capital improvement plan, making sure that our voices and our needs are represented, representative in Boston. So I just want to, what I'm here to talk about is the power supply contract. And as Peter said, these, I have been working for the Cape Light Compact and negotiating contracts since two thousand and one, and I've never seen electric rates this high or volatile in that twenty-year period. And what I'm talking about is this is a basic electric bill, and the compact's responsible for C, the supply charges, which is B. And how do you know if you're on the Cape Light Compact's power supply rate? I highlighted in the bottom, it would say your electricity is provided by the supplier that we selected through a competitive bid process, which is Nextera Energy Services, and it says billing for the Cape Light Compact. So you can simply check your electric bill to see if you are on the Cape Light Compact's supply rate. So these are the electric rates that Massachusetts residents and businesses are looking and facing over the next six months. The Cape Light Compact's basic product for our renewable rate is twenty-one point six cents. That is up from sixteen point nine cents from the period of July through December that Peter just referenced. If there is any good news right now, the rates are, we are lower than the utility EverSource basic service rate and significantly lower than national grid rates, so the timings vary slightly. Our meter, our rates are in effect from your December meter read through June meter reads, EverSource, January through June, and National Grid, November through April. But these are electric rates at historic prices. And it is not unique, this would bear very grim news, but this electricity pricing is not unique. You're going to see increase in all delivered fuels, your natural gas bills, your propane bills, and your oil bills as well, which is why I want to spend the majority of my presentation talking about what can we do to mitigate these impacts for our residents and businesses. So what's driving our high rates? Forty-five percent of electricity in New England is generated from gas-fired, natural gas plants. That's where our electricity comes from. And natural gas prices have increased three hundred percent since this time last year. And because electricity and natural gas rise together, that is why we're seeing significant electric increases, because natural gas rates are going up. Why are natural gas rates going up? There are several factors within the U. S., and then, most importantly, international factors. So factors in the U. S., natural gas demand for production, electricity has increased. We closed Pilgrim Power Plant. Coal generators are retired. Our renewable offshore wind are behind schedule. So we are overly reliant for this period of time on combined cycle natural gas plants. Other fuels, which would have been able to mitigate potentially, natural gas prices are not there to meet the demand. Natural gas storage levels are low, and probably, and I'm going to come back to this in a second, because there is a little bit of moderately good news on the winter. Prices will ultimately be influenced by winter weather. Most of our, oh, wait a minute. Most of our prices, where does our natural gas come from? We are pipeline constrained. So winter, when you, a lot of our homes heat with natural gas. We also produce electricity for natural gas. Heating your home takes priority. So in New England, we need to rely on LNG, liquefied natural gas, which is now, it'd come in, every terminal would come into Boston, and that would be the backstop for generate, for the plants that are generating electricity. But because LNG is a global market, we are now competing and paying LNG prices that Europe is pricing. As the war in Ukraine has progressed and as Russia has shut off natural gas plants and limited the supply, you basically, it's very interesting, you can see ships that would, are heading here, and then at sea will reroute because they're, they're able to get a higher price, a higher market price for their commodity in Europe. So that is what is driving our very, very high electric rates. We are subject to, electricity, natural gas is a global commodity, and because we are so, we're pipeline constrained, and we are reliant on LNG, and LNG is, we are paying European prices for our LNG to produce electricity. So what can you do? I should have, there's another slide I should have put first, but I want, this is really, for me, a very important slide, because people need to take a look at their income. There are programs available in Massachusetts for those that are on fixed incomes, and it's not your assets. This is based on your gross income. Many people may have, live in your home, your home is paid for, but you're living on social security. That may only be within an income-eligible or a enhanced residential. So I would ask everybody, when you are, when you get your January bill and you look at a very high bill, to make sure that you check. So when you, when I say check, I'm going to go to the next slide, and I'll come back to this. I want you to check and make sure you're on the correct electric rate. Are you eligible for a discounted electric or natural gas rate? So what I mean by that, I don't want to make everybody dizzy. If you are a single person, retiree, or even, regardless of your age, and your income is forty-two, your gross income is forty-two thousand dollars or less, you need to be on the electric discount rate. And if you have both fuels, everybody has electricity. If you heat your home with natural gas, you should be on the natural gas rate. Why? Because the electric rate for income-eligible customers is a thirty-six percent discount off of your total electric bill. For the natural gas customers, it's a twenty-five percent discount off of your total electric bill. You need to, so again, I strongly encourage, make sure that you check your income. If you're not on a discount rate and you're eligible, you've been, you pay, we all pay for these rates. We subsidize these rates. We help each other out. So you've been paying into it for many, many years. So this is the time that if you are eligible, you should be, I'd encourage you, strongly encourage you to enroll for the discount rates. Sign up for budget billing. This is going to be a tough winter. There is a shut, no, your electricity and gas can't be shut off in the winter, but start setting, signing up for budget billing. So hopefully, as rates will go down, you can spread out your winter bill over a twelve-month period. Sign up, as I said, for fuel assistance. If you're not on the correct rate, you need to contact EverSource or National Grid, EverSource for electricity, and National Grid for natural gas bills. They are required by law. Once you contact them to immediately put you on, on a discount rate, then they give you thirty days to fill out paperwork, lots of paperwork. But all of the senior centers I know have staff available to help and are very familiar with completing these documents as well. So the disinformation is on our website. It'll now be on the part of the selectment packet, and you can always contact the Cape Light Compact staff for assistance as well.
So Maggie, just for a sec, if I thought I was income-eligible, where do I sign up?
I'm going to get, I'm pretty sure my last slide has resources. So you can go for electric, you go to the EverSource website, and that's the best way to do it, easiest way, especially if you're not computer savvy or intimidated. Pick up the phone, call EverSource. They still have staffing, and tell them that you're income-eligible and you'd like to be put on the discount rate. They will then send you paperwork. Housing Assistance Corporation, South, there are different organizations, and we have some links in Hyannis, unfortunately. So there's a trip to Hyannis. They'll also help you with the paperwork. But the quickest way to do it is to call EverSource or National Grid directly.
Mr. Shell.
Yeah, just to clarify, first of all, these are applicable no matter who your supplier is.
Correct.
Okay. And the reason you're telling us to, people to call either National Grid or EverSource is because they're the billing face that everybody deals with for, just for billing purposes?
Yes. And the second reason is because these are discounts off of the total bill. So it is both, you know, and.
Supply and distribution?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So the first, one of the first steps, and this is my favorite part, is to talk about energy efficiency. So increased electric rates really reinforce the importance of reducing your kilowatt-hours for electricity, your therms for natural gas, by participating in the Cape Light Compact's energy efficiency program to reduce your total consumption. You know, if your house is drafty, if it's not well insulated, there are programs specifically designed to improve the comfort and keep you in your home so that you're warm and safe. So that's the first step. We did a huge push this fall, was it, with the Main Streets, Chatham Main Streets program. We signed up lots of local businesses, saved and installed thousands of dollars of lighting, refrigeration. It was very timely. Hopefully, our, those that participated will be well situated on the business end. And again, for homes, if you haven't had a home energy assessment, now's the time to sign up. Just other things. Set your thermostat at sixty, sixty-eight degrees. You don't need to keep it on, I hate to sound like Jimmy Carter, and put on a sweater, but you know, leaving, moving thermostats up and down can actually make you colder because it's really warm, and then you go into another room, and you catch, it's drafty, you almost catch a chill. A consistent temperature is recommended for heating your home. Sixty-eight is what the A C triple E, American Society of Civil Engineers recommends. Heat rises, remember that? Use your ceiling fans. Put them on clockwise direction to help circulate the air. If you have, and switch to LEDs, if you still have incandescent bulbs floating around, make sure that you have high-efficiency lighting. Water heaters, set it to a hundred and twenty degrees. That gives you plenty of hot water. You do, and size your dehumidifier for your space, and keep the settings as low as possible. It's dry this time of year. But there are, there are lots of things that you can do. And then, my other, continue on this, is for unplugged battery chargers or power adopters not in use, and use an advanced power slip strip. I have one of these that you just, to your television and your modem, but everything else will be powered off. It keeps what needs to be on for your internet connection, but everything else goes into sleep mode. For those of you who have teenagers or any young adults, unplug your chargers. Don't walk around, you see little strings hanging out of everybody's plugs. They are still drawing electricity. Yes, it's a small amount, but that's what you call a vampire load. Unplug everything and turn things off. Change or clean your furnace, your heat pump filters once a month. You know, running your equipment as efficient and as cleanly as possible is the best thing. Fireplaces, if you don't use your fireplace, install a chimney balloon. Fireplace with, it's basically a giant hole in your house, in the middle of your house, and especially if you're not using it, these chimney balloons can be ordered online through, there are links on the Cape Light Compact's website. Very simple. Blow it up. It fills the space and blocks in any draft from coming in from your, from your chimney. Again, it's common sense. Wash full, for laundry, wash full loads only, dishwashers, clotheswashers. I know, it just sounds a lot like old-fashioned advice, but this is going to be a time of extremely high prices for many fuels. And I just think we need to just take a step back and do things that you, we kind of stepped away from. So questions? You can go to the Cape Light Compact's website, call for energy efficiency audit, and there are lots of tips. I do want to go back. I think somebody mentioned about a competitive supply contract. So you saw the pricing. Our rates, we had to secure, just like the EverSource and National Grid, you have to secure your contracts prior to the start date. And prior to the start date, in this fall, we were looking at extremely high snowfall, cold winters, rolling blockouts. I'd think if you go, maybe follow the news about, two months ago, it was at Armageddon, but there was, they were thinking about a very cold winter. That has significant, that has changed. I S O New England just came out with their forecast today, saying that we're expecting a mild to moderate winter. And that will, will affect market prices for electricity. So the compact's rates are set. In January, you may be contacted by other suppliers because they're not, they will be buying in a market that is lower. So there are potential options for lower supply rates, especially if we continue to have a warm winter. The compact has lots of information on how to select a supplier. We're also available to help you negotiate terms and conditions, what you should sign, shouldn't sign. You know, these are, Cape Light Compact is not, and can't be, the lowest rate at all time because we buy in a market and markets move. So if we do continue to see weather projections that are moderate or warm, you will see rates, the energy markets drop, which means suppliers will then be able to buy a heck ton of energy and look for people to sign up for their rates. So pay attention. There may be better deals than what you're seeing and what we are able to offer at this time. So are there any other questions?
Maggie, that was great. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Shell?
Yeah, I'd just like to pursue that a little bit. We're not commodities traders. And, and you, I know, and I'm probably going to betray my ignorance here a little bit, but I think people like us get all kinds of stuff in the mail saying, you know, sign this, do this, here's a cheaper rate, these guys are bad, whatever it says. And who knows what's the right thing to do? Do you, do you have a kind of a, like a, I'll say it for myself, an idiot-proof recommendation as to what somebody can do that, that they can get some advice as to how to do this and not be sort of playing the weekly or monthly pricing game? Just something that is sensible and safe in terms of making a commitment vis-à-vis the best supply options?
Sure. So two things. One, on our website, capelightcompact.org, power, power supply, we have a video and tips on what to look for in a contract. Second, if some, I actually said first, never, and I mean never, give your electric account number or your gas account number to anyone over the phone. If somebody is trying to sign, sign you up for any type of, tell them you want, send you the information in the mail so that you can read it. Again, I can't repeat that strong enough. Never give your gas or electric account number over the phone. Ask for everything in writing so that you can see the terms and conditions. Second, and I've seen them, they're, you know, four pages, double-sided. Call the Cape Light Compact's office. A lot of people stop by because most of the utilities don't have offices anymore. So come by the Cape Light Compact with the documents, and staff will say, will help you explain things. But there is information on the website. Some people get overwhelmed. Call the Cape Light Compact or stop by. But again, don't give your information out. Ask for everything in writing. And you know, there, there is a good potential, unless it to be, unless the weather changes and the markets go up, that you will be able to get a better potential rate. They'll probably want to lock you in for a period of time, which is fine. That's why we want to make sure that there are no fees and, so we're here to help.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Just a quick question. Maggie, you interface with the Council on Aging or the Center for for?
I'm trying to think if Brianna went to, to council on aging. I know we just, we were in Yarmouth, but.
The only reason why I bring it up is some elders don't have access to websites and computers and stuff, and I think it's.
They haven't in the last year, year and a half or so, but prior to COVID, they were there all the time. As a matter of fact, we used to give briefings at the Council on Aging on what you should do. So it is something we should do more.
Yeah, thank you, Peter.
I'll have staff reach out and see if they want us to come and give a presentation. Usually, we give small groups that are interested. I think it will be after the holidays, because that's when I think you're going to see supply, suppliers and markets kind of ease off.
Yeah, I always plug the, the Energy Efficiency Program that you folks sponsor. I've had it a couple times. It's, it's wonderful. It's just wonderful what they do and what they, what they charge. Really, you get a great bang for your buck.
Thank you.
And I just can't plug it enough. I know Peter's plugged it for years, and I've plugged it for years, but it really is wonderful. Thank you. That was great. It really was.
Thank you very much. Nice to see everyone and have a happy holidays.
Thank you, Maggie. Okay, moving on. Our next item is our annual liquor license renewals. And we have a few here, and I will turf it over to Shawna and walk us through it a little bit. Shawna, there's quite a few, quite a lot going on here.
Sure. These are the annual renewals for all liquor licenses, annual liquor licenses in town. That includes all alcohol package stores, wine and malt package stores, all alcohol restaurants and inns, and wine and malt-only restaurants and inns, as well as our Veterans Club and our. our Veterans Club and our, the two other club licenses in town for Eastwood Home and the Chatham Drama Guild. All of the applications and fees for renewals came in on time, which is wonderful. I thank all of my licensees for that. And we have had no reports from the state ABCC on any violations from any of our establishments in town this year, which is wonderful to hear as well.
Yeah, good. Excellent. Typically, do we read, do we read these? I think we do.
They have been read in the past, yes.
So, Mr. Castro, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the 2023 renewals of annual liquor licenses as recommended by the licensing agent, and I'll read them by category. All alcohol package stores, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 15. Eric Peone, Sr., doing business as Chatham Light Liquors. Chatham's Liquor Locker, Quick Pick Inc., doing business as Chatham Liquor Locker. New Chatham Corp., doing business as Chatham Liquor Store. Dash Inc., doing business as Shop Ahoy Liquors. Deftos Liquor Store Inc., doing business as South Chatham Liquors. Wine and malt only package stores, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 15. Chatham Cheese Company, LLC, Chatham Village Market, Inc. All alcohol restaurants and inns, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12. Blue Fin Sushi and Saki Bar. Branches Grill and Cafe. Chatham Bars Inn, East of Shore Road. Chatham Bars Inn, West of Shore Road. Doc Drop LLC, doing business as Drifters. Inn Partners LLC, doing business as Inn at 359 Main Street. J.J.G. Chatham, Inc., doing business as Del Mar Bistro. Red Boy, Inc., doing business as The Red Nun. One Drop Operating, doing business as The Chatham Squire. Pizza Shark, Inc. Sign of the Surf, Inc., doing business as The Impudent Oyster. Scorpios Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Knott's Landing Bar and Grill. TPG Chatham Beverages, LLC, doing businesses, doing business as Chatham Wayside Inn. Wine and malt only restaurants and inns, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12. Backpack Forever, LLC, doing business as Mom &amp; Pops. Captain's House Operating, LLC, doing business as Captain's House Inn. Chatham Filling Station, LLC, doing business as Chatham Filling Station. Hanger B., LLC. South Chatham Seafood, LLC, doing business as Chatham Fish and Lobster. All Alcohol Club, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12. Chatham Drama Guild, Inc. Eastwood Ho Country Club, Inc. All Alcohol Veterans Club, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12. Brown James Buck Memorial Association, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. A motion.
That was the motion. I'll second.
That was the motion.
Second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Next item is to consider the request for temporary closings of establishments holding annual liquor licenses. This is something we go through kind of every year as well. Shawna?
Sure. This is, again, a requirement of our local alcoholic beverages licensing regulations that any establishment holding an annual license that wishes to close for more than two consecutive weeks have permission from the Board of Selectmen to do so, excuse me, the Select Board. And there are four that are requesting it. Chatham Cheese Company is a, is granted an annual wine and malt only package store license because the town does not have any seasonal package store licenses. They were converted to annual licenses in the eighties. So they do close for those, for about three months every year. The others are Mom &amp; Pops, Chatham Squire, and Knott's Landing, again, seeking time to do renovations and cleaning.
Okay, thank you. Motion. Mr. Shell?
I move the temporary, to approve the temporary closings of the following establishments have requested temporary closings longer than two weeks. Chatham Fish Company, January 1, 2023, through March 15, 2023. Mom &amp; Pops, February 15, 2023, through March 15, 2023. Chatham Squire, February 25, 2023, through March 15, 2023. Knott's Landing Bar and Grill, March 8, 2023, through March 29, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. A second.
Second.
Thank you. A vote. Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is town property at 127 Old Harbor Road, a discussion. I'll just tee this up and give this, the Select Board, a little context. We had a very, I thought, very useful discussion of goals and objectives last week. As we looked at the goals and objectives for affordable and attainable housing, we had included 127 Old Harbor Road in the same kind of grouping and definition as Stepping Stones Meeting House and the Buckley property, if you will, 1533. And I think appropriately, we kind of bifurcated, did not include 127 Old Harbor underneath that particular goal and objective. However, it was also expressed, I think, by at least three of us, that, that we would really like to revisit 127 Old Harbor Road. And just a brief editorial comment from me, and then I'll turf it to the, to the board, but, you know, the property is in horrible shape. It's really falling down around us, and I think it's a, you know, frankly, a travesty in some degree that we've allowed it to deteriorate, so, to deteriorate thusly. So I'm extremely interested, as a Select Board member and as a citizen, interested in affordable housing and rekindling interest for including 127 Old Harbor Road in our, in our menu for affordable housing going forward. And I don't know what that means yet, but I would like some discussion surrounding that issue this evening, and then give some direction to the town on where we'd like to go, that, again, I'm a strong proponent of including this particular piece of property. It has been, you know, obviously, a subject of some, some deep discussion at the Select Board level and at town meeting. We did not prevail with a two-thirds majority at town meeting, but I would like to revisit that assumption going forward in some measure at an, at an annual town meeting. So, I'll be quiet there. I think it's much needed. I think we're behind the eight ball in terms of where we are with respect to our complement of affordable housing. I think we have, you know, four behind the Fisherman's Alliance. We have two being built on George Ryder Road South, and then one on, on Crawley Road, but, you know, seven units in 10 years is really not acceptable. And I know we're working very hard as a board and as a town and as a staff to develop properties going forward, and we will. But I think this is an existing property that is in disrepair that we really need to do something about. So, I will be quiet. That's it for me. Mr. Shell, and then on to the rest.
Yeah, and I, I think I was, well, I won't characterize my participation the last time. I was strongly in favor of this being on the agenda for affordable, attainable housing going forward. In, in terms of how we proceed today and going forward, I, I guess I want to open by saying I recognize this is a subject that is, it's not without controversy. We saw it at the annual, at the town meeting last year, and indeed, the year before. It was at the end of the town meeting agenda last year. Quite a number of people had left. It received a pretty strong majority vote. The vote was eighty-one to fifty-one. A mere change of seven votes, given that very unrepresentative total number of people voting, would have given it the two-thirds vote. And I, it also had a, an affirmative vote of the, the Select Board to put it on the town warrant last year. The, the resolution itself was relatively simple. It was that authorization was sought for designating, repurposing the property for affordable housing, and authorizing the Select Board to proceed pursuant to that resolution in a, in the way that the board deemed to be in the best interests of the town. I, I think, as Jeff said, there's a lot of work to be done. I'm quite confident to, excuse me, decide the, the technicalities, the, what needs to be done, what is the best way to achieve what I'll call a consensus, by which I mean a two-thirds consensus of the community, to proceed with this. There's already been commentary, letters to the Select Board on the subject. We've seen a little bit of activity in the, the letters to the editor section of the, of the Chronicle on the subject. I, I think the best thing to do here is to proceed to say, we're going to pursue this, we're going to listen to people, we're going to do homework to figure out what is the best course of action. But for purposes of what the board is doing tonight, that we simply say, we're going to put a warrant article on the warrant, we're going to ask essentially for the same authorization that we got, yes, last year, and we're going to give it the, let's say, the prominence in terms of a vote that is reflective of the town's views on the subject. And then we do the homework between now and, and May, when we have the, the town meeting, to, to be in a position to be more definitive about some of the things that we're thinking about. And I'm quite aware that, among other things, we need to address the, the playground that's there and that was in the will of the donor. These are things that I think we can work out. So I, I, I'm looking for a pretty simple approach tonight, followed by the detail work thereafter.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Mr. Metters? No?
I have plenty to say.
Okay.
Sorry.
I don't, does Katie have a presentation? I don't want to cut. Would you like to do the presentation, Katie, or? That's fine. Please.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Actually, you had covered most of what I was going to go over. I will say, though, that I do have the GIS maps or, and a Google Earth map, if anybody would like me to bring that up on the screen if there's any need for that. So, I can do that if, if need be. And then, just to say that in the staff report, we had provided some information about what we should consider as we move forward. I do want to mention that the Affordable Housing Trust had authorized $50,000 for, to look at the property, you know, structurally, you know, feasibility of what could be done with the property. But we didn't want to do that if town meeting didn't approve it. We didn't want to spend those funds. So, again, I would say this, if the property were to be considered used for affordable housing, those funds could be used. If the property were to be used for attainable housing moving forward, we would have to identify another funding source. So I just wanted to put that on the board's radar as well.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Thank you very much. Anybody want to see the map, or are we really enough with the property, or?
Yeah, put it up.
Yeah, yeah. Katie, please put it up. Yeah.
So, as you can see, the property, I'll, I'll remove the outline, but I just wanted folks to see for the purposes of looking at the entire parcel. The parcel is outlined in yellow. Just remove that so the property can be seen better. You can actually see, in this area here, there's the fence that actually defines the area that was utilized for the playground. That, you know, that is still in existence. And then, the reuse of the property that would likely be discussed or would likely happen, I'll just outline. That would be the area that we would be looking to potentially utilize for anything other than, because the playground has already been established. So, that would be the area that we would be looking to utilize. Again, we had talked about only reusing the structures. So, it would just, if that's the case, then, then we would look at specifically just at the structures. But I just wanted to point out the area that is actually not used for the playground at this point.
Is that the area that was referred to in the, in the warrant article as being forty-one thousand eight hundred plus or minus square feet?
Yes.
Super. Okay. Thank you, Katie. Mr. Metters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing more uncomfortable with being on the minority of a discussion. And I'm really not on the minority, or, or the flip side of this. Just a couple thoughts, a couple observations. One, and I've said this before, and I've said it, I'll say it again, I'm not an anti-affordable housing on this psych, I want to have just a comprehensive discussion on this property. The town should be absolutely, and I'm stressing absolutely ashamed of ourselves for how we've let this property go, period. That's, that's on us, and, and there's no excuse, and we should be ashamed of ourselves. But, with that being said, we need to have a flat-out discussion about what's best for this property. And we have never had a comprehensive discussion about it. And there's nothing wrong with having affordable housing as one of the discussion topics. Totally fine. You have affordable housing, you have attainable housing. Why haven't we discussed workforce housing? Workforce housing? There's certainly a need for it. So, you know, I, I just, I'm, I get frustrated that we, that we just kind of, such a narrow view of, you know, how we want to handle certain town properties, because we only have a limitation of what we have for in our inventory. You know, we have other wishes on our wish list of what to do with different projects. You know, we have this academic facility that our wish list to do. I would question whether this would be one of the areas that we could potentially look at for that kind of use. So, I just want to have a comprehensive discussion about it. I'm also, and I'll be very blunt about this, disappointed in a couple areas. One, this board collectively has done an awful lot for affordable housing, attainable housing projects over the last several years, and we continue to get grief and comments and social media and whatever on the streets that we're not doing anything for affordable attainable housing as a group. And, and I'm kind of getting tired of it. We, we work very hard on that. We may not disagree 100% on every topic, but we collectively are working hard on that. Also, and keep it brief on this one, disappointed in the letter to the editor last week, you know, I have served, I think I've served well on this board for quite some time. The tone which the article was written, especially coming from some people that were, that very dedicated to this community, and given so much to it, recognizing there should be difference of opinions, I took it as a question, a shot on my integrity. I have, and I've stated this before, a cousin who is a neighbor of this property. It's a cousin, it doesn't qualify for conflict of interest. I was nudged multiple times heading into town meeting that I should recuse myself from the process. I've disclosed this information, it is not a factor in it. You don't want to disagree with me? Fine, so be it. Please don't take a shot at my integrity. I've served this town well, and I'm not going to stand for it. It's, it's, you know, it's, I get the compassion and the affordable housing component of this. We need housing. We've needed housing for years. We're always going to need housing. And again, I've said this time and time again, and people are going to choose how they want to, you know, believe me or not. I'm not anti-affordable housing on this property. I just want a comprehensive review of it, and God help me, I still believe that we should buy by the rights of the donor. None of us will ever know 100% for sure what Ms. Ellis would say to X, Y, or Z proposal. None of us do. We, we, we take our best educated position on what was given to us in documentations and stories and what have you. So, at the end of the day, this has got to go before the town meeting, and the voters are going to decide, not the five of us. It's the voters who are going to decide what's best for the community. We need to package it and have a discussion and review certain areas so the citizens can make the best choice for the town. They're the ones who are going to make this decision when all is said and done. So, I thank you for listening to me, and I will pause for the moment.
Thank you, Corey. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Jeff. And thank you, Corey, for your comments. I, I look at this as an opportunity for the town to make a house a home that has been sitting in disrepair for a number of years, has been used for other reasons, namely, the water department for a number of years. What I think is the most important thing that we should be thinking about going forward is taking this back to town meeting and ask the people, do you want this for affordable or attainable housing? And then we do the due diligence on the work of what we need to get done if that vote is a positive. I think that would be the most simplest thing. I don't think we should start to get bogged down by, you know, doing any plans that, that, you know, could just drag the process, you know, even longer. This is a piece of property that is next to a school. It's walking distance to downtown. It's got so much potential for a family or a couple of fam- It's got so much potential for a family or a couple of families to live there. And I feel that, um, I'm ashamed at how we have just kicked this, you know, this gem around and around and around and around and made all kinds of excuses about maybe the, the owner didn't, you know, they don't want it to see, see it be affordable housing, um, or, you know, there must be a better use for it somehow, or maybe we should sell it, or maybe we should do all this stuff. This is enough. Enough is enough. We had the vote two years ago on this house, and we lost it by only seven votes at the end of a town meeting. And it really, really, we have heard from a number of people today, we have people sitting in the audience that are, um, interested in housing. And we, we have heard from people today that are in favor of, of, of moving forward with this. I think this is something we can take to town meeting, and I think that we can, um, as you said, Cory, we can discuss it there. Um, but I'm not, I'm tired of getting bogged down by things. Let's just move forward with this.
Thank you, Shereen. Mr. Castro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to assure Mr. Metters that he's, he's not a minority of one on this issue. Um, I do wanna acknowledge and thank those residents who sent emails to us today. I've read them all. Uh, some of them came from friends of mine, and I respect the, the opinion and position of my colleagues on this board. But I do respectfully disagree with the course of action, which I know there is a majority vote for. But I do have some things I want to say. First of all, I would like to point out that the proposal was defeated at town meeting in May, not because Mr. Metters or Mr. Castro killed it, but because town meeting rejected it. We can quibble over the, the vote share, as people did when, um, a majority of town meeting voted to stop the West Chatham project. Uh, and people said, well, it was a slim, 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 uh, difference, and it really didn't matter very much. Um, let me say that I look upon my job as an elected select board member, uh, being to keep focus on both the housing needs and what's in the best interest of the taxpayers of town and the community at large. We are once again being asked to encumber or potentially turn over the ownership and control of this property without the benefit of having had a comprehensive utilization analysis as to what would be the best use of the property for the community. We were given to understand that that could be done, but it has not yet been done. And there are indeed other ideas. For example, at May's town meeting, the chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission suggested some specific recreational-related ideas for the property that could benefit children. So I think it is premature to predetermine that one particular use, in this case, housing, should be the preferred use. I think we owe it to the taxpayers to determine the highest and best use. I also think there is a legitimate question as to whether the commitment of town assets that would be incurred is supported by the contemplated result. The town assessment for this parcel is approximately $700,000. That, but this property might be grossly under-assessed and therefore greatly undervalued because there is a significant discrepancy in the lot size. The current town assessment is premised on a lot size of .88 acres, but the recorded deed at Barnstable records shows the lot is having an area of 1.79 acres, almost a full acre differential. This will have to be clarified with a certified plot plan. But regardless of the level of the lot value, when you add it to the cost, when you add to it the cost to repurpose for housing, I submit you're going to be well over $1 million, all to produce housing for just one or possibly two occupants. Nor is there any guarantee that the property would be occupied by a teacher, a nurse, a firefighter, a police officer, a local fishing person, a landscaper, or other tradesperson, as some have suggested. In fact, there is no legal assurance that it would even go to a family or to a Chatham resident. I submit that would be a meager return on the town's investment. This proposal, I think, is short on demonstrable facts, and it, to me, is a nickel-and-dime approach to solving Chatham's housing problem. We'd be better off selling the property for more than $1 million and placing the proceeds in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to support housing development in town for multiple families. And finally, as I've noted, the, the Select Board's article to repurpose this property was only recently rejected by town meeting. I think, and I guess this is consistent with what I've, what I've said for many years about town meeting votes, that the Select Board should be very cautious about going forward with something when town meeting has said no. I think we should accept the verdict of town meeting on this proposal and instead pursue a broader utilization review of this property that is not limited to any one area. This review could be done in collaboration with the Parks and Recreation Commission and the school district. And that collaboration would be consistent with Ms. Ellis' stated recreational purpose for her generous donation. And I think this approach would be far more productive than having this issue keep bouncing back and forth between the Select Board and town meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Castro? Any comments from anybody? Mr. Shell, and I have some as well.
Well, I don't wanna leap ahead of you.
No, go ahead, Mr. Shell.
I don't wanna leap ahead of you, if you would.
No, I, I, I just think it's a stall, and, and we have, we have seven units in 10 years in this town, and when we're, this is, it's high, high time we really started to, to get shovels going and get, and get some results. So, I, I strongly, strongly support the pursuit of, uh, developing this property as, as community housing, affordable housing, whatever. But I think we need to start to work. I'm not so sure I wanna wait to town meeting and, and, and ask for a vote. I, I think, I think we need a plan, to be honest with you. Um, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I, I, but I would like to put a, a stake in the ground that says we are going to go to town meeting and seek the authorization we needed town meeting, so the work we do between now and then, just like the $50,000 that we're not spending until we get the, uh, the approval is not wasted. Um, but I, I, I just wanna come back and address a couple of the comments that, that Cory and Dean made. I, I would love, I, I don't expect it, but I'd love to see us vote five to nothing in favor of a resolution here. Uh, I, I would say, Cory, I, 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 I think, you know, there's, you, whatever theoretical conflict somebody might think you have, you've disclosed, and, and you're, you're now in the business of being a, a, a Select Board member, and I, I certainly have complete confidence that you're looking to do the best you can for the, for the, for, for the town. Um, and, and I, I, I also, Dean, I, I don't wanna be flip about the, the, the importance of a town meeting vote, but at the same time, just like boards are entitled to change their mind, uh, about something subsequently, um, town meeting is entitled to be asked to change its mind and, and, and to give an answer. And particularly under circumstances where there is substantial sentiment and newly-developed sentiment, or maybe I should say awareness, uh, around affordable housing and the need to move forward expeditiously on initiatives that we have in front of us, including that opportunity, uh, I, I think that's a, that plus the fact that, that, I mean, there, what, 6,500 people live in Chatham? 51 people last year, last May vetoed the proposal that we, uh, repurposed that property. Uh, I, 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 I wanna respect town meeting, but that's a pretty small number of people that have basically said, you can't go forward with an, an initiative that I, I trust, we all agree, is a, is a very important one. So I, all, as, as Shereen said, all I'm really looking for here is a resolution that says we're gonna present to town meeting, uh, a request for authorization to repurpose that, and we can include, it can be affordable, attainable, workforce, uh, housing, and we're gonna do the homework in the meantime to be prepared to, to, to have a reasonable discussion of the kind that Cory, uh, is, is contemplating that, uh, will, 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 will let people make an informed decision about what they wanna do. Uh, I guess the last thing I'll say is, I, 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 I am pretty confident that whether we decide to put that on the warrant, uh, in May, there will be a citizens petition, a warrant, a, a, article, uh, for this proposition one way or the other. And I think we oughta, we, we oughta maintain, um, control of the process and, and, uh, not be sort of at the whim of, of, of a citizens petition.
Ms. Davis, any, any further, any follow-up or, or a motion?
I, I can agree. I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, hmm, how are we gonna do this? Um, we haven't really talked about the board direction, though. I mean, except for voting for, you know, making a motion to, uh, move this towards town meeting, um, for affordable or attainable housing.
In the preparation of a warrant article, Mr. Shell?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm happy to discuss it, but I, I think the resolution that was put in front of town meeting the last time is perfectly adequate. And essentially, it said that, 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 uh, the board, that the resolution was to uh, seek authorization from town meeting to repurpose the property. In that case, it said, uh, for affordable, attainable housing, I am more than happy to add to that workforce housing. Uh, and then to authorize the board, uh, to, um, proceed with the mechanics, contracts, whatever, uh, RFPs, et cetera, to effectuate the, the, the authorization. And that's a, a proposal, a, a, a motion I would make.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second his motion.
For the discussion by the Select Board. Go to a vote. Mr. Metters?
I'm, I'm sorry I'm pausing on this one, but... So we're gonna throw it out for fee, affordable, attainable, and workforce housing, period?
Yeah.
And we're not gonna have a collaborative discussion about anything else that we may wanna, the board may wanna discover? Which I think is a little bit short-sighted. I'm not...
Okay.
I guess, no, no.
Okay. Mr. Shell?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
No.
And the chair votes, uh, aye, yes. So carries three to two. Thank you. And we'll, we'll, we'll get more work going here. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Town Manager Appointment, Extension and Successor Employment Agreement. Briefly tee this up. Uh, we've, uh, met as, as a Select Board and have come to, I'll wait till the room clears. Okay, Town Manager Appointment Extension and Successor Employment Agreement. We have met as a Select Board and, and discussed, uh, Jill's, uh, contract. We have decided unanimously, 100% consensus, that we will be offering Jill a four-year extension from 2023 to 2027, um, with, uh, you know, very supportive as a board, um, with minor changes to the, to the, to the agreement. Mr. Castro had one edit here today that I think we should include, uh, herein rather than hereafter. But I, I just wanted to also state that, um, we appreciate your effort and your, the excellent job you've done. And we've also had some, some great discussion, um, around goals and objectives and what we want you to accomplish as a Town Manager, um, that might be a little different than generic goals and objectives, um, in terms of, uh, hiring and morale, et cetera. So we've had, I think, some excellent discussions with Jill, uh, on the, on the town going forward for four years and, and our, and on our future working together. So with that being said, Jill, I will turf it to you.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
So the staff report lays out the, um, I guess longevity from, uh, the Select Board hiring me in July of 2011. The first contract was in August 15th, 2011 as well. And then there's been two successor agreements, uh, the first one for five years and the second one for four years, and that's the term I'm currently in. And so, uh, thank you to the board, uh, for the great discussions that we had. And, um, what I'm presenting tonight is a contract that's been annotated from what currently exists, and all of the contracts have been available on the town's website. And so what the board has in your packet is a redlined version of changes that we discussed. And the most recent change that was brought forward by, uh, Select Board Member Castro relates to Item 11, Exclusive Employment. And the second, second line from the bottom, it says, "Herein After Provided," and in consultation with Town Council, it's "herein." So, uh, "herein provided." So that's the only additional change for the contract that's presented. And it includes, as I noted before, um, an itemization of a new holiday, Juneteenth, that's observed, annual compensation updates at a 3% increase each year, and payment of accrued, which is earned but unused, vacation leave up to a maximum of five days from, up to a maximum of 10 days from five days currently. Um, as you know, being a Town Manager 24/7 and 365 days a year, sometimes it's, it's not always feasible for me to take time off. And so, uh, because it's earned and accrued, that was one of the newer items presented. And again, uh, the duration continues our partnership to carry out the board's annual goals and community value statements. I do wanna note that I'm very fortunate to work in this beautiful community. Uh, we have a very hard-working and supportive elected board of, so, Select Board, I'm still getting used to that change. And a recent candidate had reviewed one of our meetings and found the board very supportive, and that was an impetus for them to apply. So that was really exciting for me. And then we have a dedicated team of professionals committed to public service, and an engaged and very informed citizenry, which basically is a hat-trick for us in the town management field, and I feel very lucky and very thankful. So I wanted to express my appreciation to you and the community. So thank you.
Super. So we do need a vote. Uh, Mr. Castro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just for the benefit of the rest of the board, that, that word change, uh, as Town Council pointed out, the, the "herein" is meant to refer back to paragraph six. Um, we should've caught that. I take, I take the blame, uh, four years ago, because I chaired the board and we let that go.
Yeah, but you got it four years later.
Yeah, that's okay. Better late than never.
Legal, aye.
Maybe if Mr. Mr. Shell had been on the board, then he would've got it. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that the board vote to approve a four-year appointment extension through June 30th, 2027, for Jill Goldsmith as Town Manager, and, and approve, uh, and vote approval of the Successor Employment Agreement dated July 1, 2023, through June 30th, 2027, as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, let's take a vote. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much, Select Board, and thank you, Jill. Okay. Our final, uh, item on our business agenda this evening are committee appointments. Uh, we have one for the Summer Residents Advisory Committee and one for the Human Services Committee. A motion to appoint Ms. Gibson. Yes, Ms. Davis?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Patricia Gibson to the Human Services Committee until June 30th, 2025, unless sooner revoked or her successor is appointed.
Second.
Thank you. And a vote, Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. And a nomination for Mr. Garvey. Or a motion, please.
Go ahead.
No, please.
Um, I move to appoint Thomas Garvey to the Summer Residents Advisory Committee as an associate until June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. And the final act this evening is a motion to adjourn.
So.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And Mr. Dyken says aye as well. Thank you very much, and good night, Chatham.[1747.11]